Oh. Call to order, the Gladstone City Council, City Hall, at May 26, 2015, at 6:40 PM. Um, Jolene, will you take the role, please?
Commissioner, Councilor Nelson.
Here.
Councilor Mercer.
Here.
Councilor Johnson.
Here.
Councilor Sickman.
Here.
Councilor McMahon.
Here.
Councilor Eisner.
Here.
Mayor Jacobella.
Here. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Um, everybody fill out their cards if you needed to fill out one business from the audience. I'll just remind you, in order to speak, fill out the card, there's a little, what is it, a five-by-seven card?
Yep.
Look at that. Five-by-seven card back on the podium there, and if you want to speak, fill one out.
I've got two.
You've got two?
Yeah. Uh, first, let's do Tammy Stempel.
Hello, Tammy Stempel, Planning Commission, 6960 Winfield Court. I just wanted to mention that we have a joint work session coming up on June 23rd, and we're going to meet between 6:00 and 6:30, just prior to your regularly scheduled meeting, and this is to discuss the, um, kind of, the parameters for the audit, the codes and ordinance audit that we're asking the state to help us with. So, we only have 30 minutes. I've sent to Jolene, kind of, an outline of what Planning Commission felt was most important, and she'll forward that to all of you. Um, I've, I also would like to get questions from you guys, if you need some clarifications of things prior, so that I can get those answers back, so the 30 minutes that we have can be done constructively, so we can actually get to the nuts and bolts of it, so that we can get the state moving forward as soon as possible, because I know we've been working on this project for quite a while. Um, Councilor Sickman had asked me what Smart Growth meant. That's just one document that the state looks to when they're looking at the audit, so I sent Jolene a brief, you know how brief I get, a 13-page document on what EPA designates as their Smart Growth, what the state of Oregon designates, and then also a group called Smart Growth America, which is kind of, that's all they do, is deal with Smart Growth issues. So, if you have any other questions, not tonight, but in the next couple of weeks, if you could get them to Jolene, so that we can get those vetted before the meeting, I'd appreciate it. Make sense?
Yeah.
Works for you guys? Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The next speaker wanted to go during the work session for the Webster Ridge apartment, so not right now.
Okay.
Are you going to now public testimony during the work session? We usually don't during a work session.
That's up to you entirely. I think there was an expectation that they were going to come back with, uh, some of the questions that you had, and explain those. There is the memo in your packet.
Got that.
Yeah, they're going to do presentation. Right. All right. All right, uh, we have nothing on the consent agenda this week, nothing on correspondence. Uh, moving down to the regular agenda, we're going to skip to item number two, which is the request to purchase two solar-powered driver feedback signs. And who's going to start us off on that? Did you present it?
No.
I, I could, being the liaison with the, uh, traffic safety. Um, one of the concerns that we've talked about for the last several years is, um, speed. We've got the, um, trailer that, uh, moves around town-to-town, different places upon request, and it also, not only, um, is a visual as to how fast you're going, it also records. And, uh, and we've studied that at different places when, uh, different residences have complaints. Um, and, uh, for the most part, um, our drivers are within, uh, five to 10 miles of the limit. As, as many say that sometimes it's a little faster, but, uh, still there's the concern. And, uh, in conversation, they ask, uh, we were talking about different other options that might not be as expensive as a trailer. And Milwaukee has, and so does Oregon City, these flashing speed signs that are, um, portable. And, uh, after, uh, let's see, several months of discussion, thought that maybe it would, would help. Uh, some of the other things that we've, um, implemented, uh, with Public Works assistance is, uh, in front of, uh, Wetten Elementary, there's now, uh, a row of, um, uh, they're not really cones.
Deliators.
Deli, thank you. Deliators to prevent, uh, people from turning left, which has kept the flow, uh, and has, uh, increased safety. So, um, Mr. Tabor, what else am I missing here?
Uh, I think one of the things, we, this was, uh, a lesser of two evils, that the fact that we, some of these areas automatically request speed bumps. Uh, speed bumps are really kind of out of the question as far as safety for, you know, fire apparatus, and, and they, they're kind of aggressive. Uh, the Parks and Recreation Department wished to have, I mean, not Parks, but the Traffic Safety Committee wished to have something that was, uh, transferable throughout the town. Uh, I gave them information on the driver feedback signs that can be set to flash a warning if they exceed a certain speed limit. These signs are solar-powered, can be transferred throughout the town, and we have the capabilities of putting different poles up in areas that we see a lot of, uh, that needs the attention to do it. So, they're transferable throughout the town, and it's just a reminder for the drivers that, you know, hey, you're, you're doing the speed limit, yippee, and or you're exceeding the speed limit, you know, slow it down.
What I'm doing right now, and I'm on my third week, I'm running the trailer out for three days at a time, 24 hours a day, for three days, bringing the information back, and then we're going to send it to you guys. And I did two schools now, and today I went at 5:30 in the morning, set it up at the high school, and I'll, it'll be out there for three days. And it's given us a lot of information as to the number of cars, like Craxburger is three, over 3,000 cars a day going south. Uh, and we, we got the numbers of cars and the speeds, and you guys will get all of that at Traffic Safety, and you can kind of, you know, check it out, see what you got. Portland Avenue's going to be interesting.
Yeah. I gotta try to unseat.
Well, anyway, that, that was a request, and we start, I started that about two weeks ago. Thank you.
Well, using conjunction with the radar trailer, I think it would be a good deal to, and a good reminder for the drivers throughout the town, and in areas that we can, you know, remind them that there are speed limits and they need to obey them.
How many poles do you anticipate?
Uh, I'm thinking possibly about six poles, uh, different areas, Webster, I'm thinking of, uh, Exeter Street, I'm thinking, or Kloster, uh, or by Portland Avenue. Uh, we can put them pretty much anywhere. The sign, the poles that we're using now to implement putting in regular street signs are the poles that we mount them on anyway, so they can be very transferable.
So, you're going to have, you'll be putting separate poles in, just?
For these, to start with, yes. And, but we can also modify existing poles.
Oh, they, well, you can?
Yes.
Okay. Now, who's going to put the hangers on them and move them around?
We will. Uh, we'll be instructed by the vendor. He'll show us how they work, how to set them up, do a little training, and, uh, from then on, we'll be able to set them up where we would wish to put them.
Okay, I didn't know if we would, or you'd be doing that.
Well, we'd be putting them on, programming what would be needed for the speed in the area.
Okay.
And one question, and maybe you just answered it with the six poles. I was, um, Public Works will be in, uh, work staff during regular hours at an estimated cost of $400, is, that's for like six?
That's not the pole.
Okay. I'm going, we're putting two signs in.
No, that's, that's.
That's for multiple, multiple poles and mounted two signs.
Those can be readily, you know, installed.
Okay.
Questions?
Thank you. Well, I'm, uh, moved that we, uh, accept the Traffic Safety's, uh, recommendation and go with the, uh, the sign, um, that are flashing, that's, uh, a little, little over $100 more than, than the non-flashing. So, that would be, uh, I don't know, what, throw in the quote number of 996628 is?
Second that. All right, I had a motion from, um, Councilman Eisner regarding, uh, to authorize the purchase of these two driver feedback signs, including the flashing one, and it was seconded by Councilor Sickman, and we're up for discussion. Any discussion, anything, other than what was already talked about? I, I do have a comment. Uh, I only have a little bit of heartburn with it in that, um, and, and we're not there yet because of the transition between the outgoing chief and the interim, uh, chief or the lieutenant. Here's my concern. Right now, they're following the trailer route. The, the thought process is, you put the trailer out, you warn people for two to three weeks, and then you follow up with enforcement. You put a policeman out there with a radar gun, and he starts writing citations. You've been warned, there's a citation. It's, it's, the reinforcement may be negative reinforcement, but it's reinforcement. And now, we're going to add two more flashing signs. Which are they to follow up with? Do we have the manpower to go follow the trailer around and then follow both the signs around with enforcement? And I, I don't think we're there. And so, basically, after a period of time, people will get wise that the flashing signs really don't mean a whole lot, because they're not following up with a radar gun afterwards. That's the concern. Um, had, uh, the police lieutenant been involved in the process, maybe he would be able to shed some light and say, we, we can't follow up with that, or we can't, and we don't have that in front of us. So, that's my only concern with it, um, is the lack of enforcement on the back end of it, so.
Do you think that's something we can work on, and if we can purchase the signs, get them out there and using them, and work on that, coordinating the sign placement with the police department, and?
Well, I, I guess it could be worked on. I just, my initial thought is, and maybe, again, is that, there's just not enough manpower to sit there and follow all three signs around, week after week after week.
No, I, I understand your concern. Do other departments or cities, for example, like Lake, uh, no, Lake, uh, Oregon City, West Lynn, that's where I've seen them, is that, do they follow up with enforcement, do you know?
I didn't, I didn't talk to the other cities. I just know only the city of Portland, wouldn't you do it? That's what you follow up with.
Oh, okay.
You've been warned, you've been warned, you've been warned, there's a citation.
Sure. I never thought of it that way. I always, I, I see it flashing, saying, you know, you're going, uh, 40 in a, in a 30, you need to slow down. And, uh, I've never really thought that there would be, uh, the city maybe eventually would, would follow up with, uh, someone hi, someone, not hiding, I'm, someone down the street with a radar gun.
With Lieutenant Jolly, that's, we've been talking about this, and we're looking at the information that I'm providing to him, and then he's going to send the officers out to those specific areas to, with radar guns and check and see what's going on out there. He's going to follow up the information that I give him, so.
So, the, the trailer, I'm sorry. Does, does the trailer record, or, I mean, are you recording data on the trailer?
I'm recording data, yes.
Does, will, will these signs also record?
No. No.
I don't see anything here that says these signs record.
They don't. They, it's just a, a visual.
They don't, it's just a flash, yeah. I, I probably record. I can record up to four or five days.
Right.
And then I bring it back, put it in the computer, and then back out again, so.
So, does, does that change your thought? I mean, if they record, or if they don't record, or?
See, I'm doing the same thing with the.
That's, that's, I mean, no, I'm, it's the same, it's either.
I'm doing the same thing with the trailer. I'm doing the same thing with the trailer, only I'm able to record with it, like you said.
I think that, you know, a discussion can be had, which one we following around, and then you're not going to be using, utilizing all three, possibly. So, it's just something to think about.
You know, I think what you're saying has merit, but I also know that just my own driving habits, when all of a sudden I see a flash and it says, "You're doing X amount of miles per hour," the first thing I do is look down at my speedometer, and my foot's come off the gas, well, I was already, it was a 35, but it just said I was doing 30. You know, so I think they can have some, uh, even with, even if we don't have the manpower to follow up on them with radar afterwards, I think they can be a positive, uh, thing for the community, um.
Yeah.
If we can, if we can work in the enforcement issue afterwards, um, that would make it even better, I think. It would just, but I, I still think that they're probably a good thing to have.
I think that, that's the main thing, is that 20, you come off the freeway, or you come off of, of McLaughlin, and you hit an arterial here, and we're down to 25 miles an hour, and people don't understand that. It just doesn't sink in. 25 is too slow after you've been doing 55 or 60 on the freeway. And so, you know, we just need to make them aware that, hey, you're in our community now.
Okay. Any more discussion? Tom, can I say anything on this?
I, I agree with Kim and, and Len, that, uh, it's more a reminder than anything else. It just kind of shocks you into understanding, and I think where you see.
Left us again.
That an issue, then you need to go out and, and try to enforce it.
Go for it. Anything else? Good? Everybody good? Okay, we had a motion, it was seconded, we had a discussion, uh, all in favor of passing the motion by the radar light signs, the flashing ones. That's, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Oh, there you go. By the lights.
Thank you.
Before we start our next topic, I've had an audience request to remind the councilors to please speak into the mics.
Thank you.
Very much.
Sorry. All right. Uh, moving on to regular agenda item number three, request to purchase a 2015 Ford F-550 water service truck.
Oh, God, he's back again.
Well, you, what you have before you is a request to replace our existing F-550, that's 15 years old, has 115,000 miles on it, and if you count the hours that it's idled, probably you get three times that amount. Uh, it's possibly still a good vehicle, and my request is that we replace this vehicle with a new one for the water department, keep this existing F-550 in reserve, and stock it for sewer repairs, because right now, we're working out of the same truck. And ideally, in these situations, you should be working out of two separate vehicles, separate tools for sewer, separate tools for water. Uh, right now, it's a daily driver. This, in reserve, it would be used as needed for sewer repairs out in the field, so it would not be a daily driver. It would be waiting with, uh, materials and fittings that it could be used in, out in the field for sewer repair, carrying shoring, fittings, pipe, that type of a situation. The truck that puts on a lot of heavy miles, stop and go, uh, these are probably the worst conditions you want to drive a truck. It's extremely heavy, being that we always carry a good supply of pipe fittings that we have for either mainline repairs, water service installations, and/or repairs for water services. We require four-wheel drive so that we can access our hills during the icy conditions. Uh, it saved our bacon a couple of times when we finally got one with four-wheel drive, that we could chain up the front and back ends, that we could access some areas where we had main brakes due to the cold weather. So, what I'm asking is, uh, we've already budgeted money for, in the water department for this replacement. Northside Ford has provided everything all in one piece, so we, we can save a lot of money by not going out for separate bids. We don't have the time to do that. This is all dovetailing on the state Oregon procurement, uh, so that they've already done the bidding process, they've done everything, that, all the footwork, we're just dovetailing that. Northside Ford has one just set aside for the city of Gladstone. I've asked them to hang on to it for a little bit longer to see if we, you know, want to purchase that. I would highly recommend that we purchase a new vehicle so that we can move our fleet, um, in the next month or so. I'm gaining a list of vehicles that we do not use and do not staff, that I'm going to ask Maria from the, uh, police department to assist me in making sure that we can auction these vehicles off and clean house a little bit. Uh, some of them are way beyond their age, and we're even thinking of getting rid of our 1970 F-650 dump truck. So, kind of get a little teary-eyed thinking about it. We call her Betty. It's a.
Betty Whitehead.
Any questions?
I've, I've got, I've got one. Um, how much is it going to cost, being that you're now going, you know, separating tools and stuff, so?
We have no initial cost for changing out the, uh, service truck to the sewer department. It's just going to make it a lot easier for Justin to carry, you know, sewer repair tools in that one, and his daily driver, he can go out and do other things with it, so.
Okay, so you don't need to go out and get new saws?
No, we have specific saws already, but trying to carry them all in one vehicle's a little bit difficult, so.
That's the only question I have.
Um, thank you. Up one comment, um, being new, I wasn't sure how the state bid process worked. I did do a little bit of checking, um, and there, what I, the people I checked with basically said, oh, if you're on a state bid process, we can't compete with the pricing. So, that was something that I didn't know, that I found out, and so you have the councilors, um, if my information I was given was correct, um, this is the best price on this vehicle.
Especially, uh, Mr. Sickman, if you look at buying just the truck chassis, and then trying to buy it with the, the box and the crane all separately, we're, this is a very good price. I wouldn't want to even attempt to buy it separately.
Okay, I'll make a motion, throw it on the floor.
I had a couple, another question.
Go ahead.
The, has this vehicle already been found?
It's at Northside Ford.
Okay.
So, delivery could be very quickly.
Well, is what, is what I was, uh, actually wondering about was, if you'd went through and handpicked these options and ordered one?
No.
Or?
These just come with the state.
This is what?
I did contact Northside Ford and, and trying to prepare for this, not really knowing that they're, what they were doing, but she, the, Sharon Tucker, uh, my sales rep, indicated that they were prepping out three service vehicles, and, uh, and then I said, well, mark one for the city of Gladstone, and I'll bring it to our city council for them to discuss. Uh, so, it was very advantageous at that time to go after that vehicle, so that we could have everything that we require of it. And the only difference between this one and the next one is that we're using a hydraulic crane, which gives us more flexibility and more control. Uh, we have an electric crane on the existing 550, and you really can't fine-tune that cable drop as you can with a hydraulic crane, it's a lot safer. So, basically, that's the only difference.
Scott, how, how often do we use a crane?
Uh, quite often, really. Uh, it's, it's very essential. We lift out our, our jumping jack, which is the height, our, a gas-powered jumping jack for compacting ditches. We, you know, crane up valves, hydrants, everything else that we use that for, for heavy projects. When you're repairing a hydrant, you've got to lift that barrel off, it lifts it up smoothly. Uh, valve installations, when you're working on main lines, sometimes lifting out the old main, uh, very safer than using a backhoe, where you have an operator and the hydraulics are totally different than what you have with a crane. Safety and saving backs, to me, is important.
All right. Any other questions? Up Scott. All right. I will entertain a motion if someone so feels the move.
Okay, I make a motion that the city Public Works purchased a 2015 F-55 service truck, I guess.
F-50.
F-50.
F-55, service truck.
I'll second that.
I had a motion by Councilor Nelson to purchase the vehicle, the F-550, for the, uh, Department of Public Works, and it was seconded by Counselor McMahon. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay. It so passes. Buy your truck. Am I, mm, okay. Um, we are now going to item number, no, here it is. Item number five, we're switching down to item number five on the regular work agenda, which is the appointment of the interim city administrator. Um, and I do not have that in my packet.
I'm a little separate. I didn't, I got emailed, and I didn't make a copy.
Tom has one, we'll share his.
I don't mind.
Got the staff report, is that real?
Yes. You can pass it down.
Fair, I'll take it, Len.
There you go, thank you.
Okay, so, at the May, May 12 city council meeting, the city council voted not to renew the city administrator's contract and let it expire on June 30, 2015. On July 1st, 2015, the city will acquire an interim city administrator to conduct city business. Uh, the proposal is to appoint Assistant City Administrator Jolene Morishida to attempt to interim city administrator effective July 1st, 2015, and to authorize a, an increase in pay for Mrs. Morishida's current salary whilst serving as the interim city administrator. We have three options in front of us, one's to appoint the current assistant city administrator to the interim city administrator, hire an interim city administrator, or hire a full-time city administrator. Uh, the cost impact is basically just on the pay increase, and the recommended staff action is to, discussion by city council, and approval, approval of one of the three options. So, you just want to make a motion and then discuss it, or do you just want to discuss it, or what's your pleasure? I'll take a motion to do it? I'll entertain one?
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
On that number three option, hire a full-time city administrator, could that be like our assistant administrator, or is this somebody from outside?
The, the way it was vetted would be an outside. Does you start the process to hire a assistant administrator?
Start all over, yeah, okay.
If Mrs. Morishida wanted to put her name in the ring, that would start.
It wouldn't necessarily be not the assistant administrator to be hired, but it can be.
Like, it doesn't preclude her, no.
Yeah.
It doesn't preclude her from putting in for that job.
Right.
It's just that process, as we all know, takes time, and it will be.
It won't happen before July 1st. Or, I mean, it would be very difficult.
Yeah.
For it to, for it to happen. I shouldn't say it won't.
Extraordinarily difficult.
It'd be.
To hire a full-time?
To hire a full-time administrator before July 1st would be extremely challenging.
But you need an, an interim administrator to keep.
That's what we're thinking.
That's, that's our thought.
Right.
Have something in place.
Okay. Well, I'll make a motion.
Okay. Please make a motion.
Yeah, I make a motion, we appoint the current assistant city administrator to the interim city administrator's position. Effective, effective.
Effective?
30th, right, or July 1st?
July 1st.
Effective July 1st?
2015.
Okay, effective July 1st.
2015.
2015.
I'll second that. Okay, so the motion was made by Councilor Nelson to appoint the assistant, assistant city administrator Jolene Morishida to interim city administrator effective July 1st, 2015. It was seconded by, uh, Counselor Johnson. Any discussion?
At what point do we discuss pay? Is that something?
I, I think that just, yeah, I, I think we could have a discussion. I don't think it has to be dialed in. I think the conversation has been around, uh, the 15% range, which would put her at the entry-level, uh, city administrator position, um, so.
Could you have that?
But that's. So, we have to have a separate, uh, vote on that at some point, or discussion on that?
Uh, you know, yes, I think you'd probably want to have, if it's not now, uh, a discussion at some time about, okay, precisely what is that going to entail in terms of pay, or anything else that you'd want to see out of the interim, uh, you know, in terms of the performance and job duties. It, you know, it's something you could, you could tackle a number of ways. You could have a discussion now, you could, you could appoint, you know, the mayor and the coun, a mayor and another counselor, or a counselor, or two counselors, you know, to have a discussion with, with, uh, Ms. Morishida about that, and then come back to the council. You, you can have a decent amount of flexibility. You certainly don't have to do it tonight, but there's nothing preventing you from doing it at it.
Do you want to tackle it tonight?
No.
No. I don't think that conversation, then maybe next meeting.
I think the main thing tonight is to get her in that position, and we'll talk the wages later. We got.
Well.
Well, Jolene, I guess it also is up to you a little bit too, I think. What's your opinion on, I, I understand that you would, uh, take the interim job, is there, but I don't want to get to July 1st and then, and then have a number that we can't mutually agree on and then not, not have it work. So, you're okay with this part right now and then have further discussions?
Then we'll negotiate.
For the pay?
Why don't we set a date so that the council can come back if necessary? And that way, we all agree on a date to have an agreement and go from there. Does that sound?
Okay.
So we need to, we need to, A, like, uh, the city attorney said, maybe pick two people to, to talk and then come back to us and then we'll have the date for the next, when's our next session?
June 9th.
June...
Probably like next week, you know, the week after, the week after that.
Well, if you wanted to come back on the second, uh, Tuesday of June, then we should probably come to an agreement, if possible, by next Monday, or we could, I mean, if you put it out any further, it's going to be problematic, I think, for everybody.
Well, when's our next, weren't we meeting on the 2nd or something?
No, we're meeting on the 9th and the 23rd.
All right, so let's get it done by the 9th. Yes?
Yes.
I mean, how much time can it take? We're just going to talk, say yes, no, whatever.
Yes.
Okay, so the 9th, we'll have a decision.
Right.
Appoint two people. Who wants to be...
And there's nothing magic about the number two, so it could be one, it could be three, I think something less than a majority.
You gotta be careful when you say that, it's...
Well, I think it would be appropriate for the mayor and council president to negotiate this.
Yes, okay, good. Everybody good with that? So me and Tom will start the negotiation, talk to Jolene, and we'll have a number and then by next, the 9th, we will decide and agree.
Get approval from the council.
Uh, so as of right now, we have the motion to appoint her, we have it seconded, we've had our discussion, is there any more discussion to be had? Okay, so...
Oops.
No, I'm sorry? No? Okay. All in favor of appointing, approving the motion to appoint, uh, Assistant City Administrator Jolene Morishita to the interim city administrator effective July 1st, 2015? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay. We'll work on the second part of it.
Jolene, let's just...
What? Uh, okay, so now we're going to skip down to item number one, which should follow item number five, which is the authorization to hire additional staffing to assist in the transition, uh, to the new city administrator. And, um, the history and background, oh, Mayor Jacobellus requested this agenda item. Uh, city council took action at its May 12, 2015 council meeting to not renew the current city administrator's contract.
Right.
Proposal, authorize staff to hire an executive assistant from a temporary, temp agency, temporary agency to cover some of the workload, um, of the interim city administrator. Options, authorize a hire from a temporary agency. Option number two, do not authorize the hire. Current staff would then need to continue on without additional assistance. The cost impact, Kelly Services, for instance, a temporary agency who specializes in placing clerical workers, have provided an hourly cost range of 26 cents, $26.19 an hour to $32.40 an hour to the city of Gladstone. This price includes the fee charged by Kelly Services. Any overtime charges would be in addition to this rate. Recommend a staff action. Uh, staff recommend city council authorize the hire of a temporary person through a contract agency.
I've got one question. Would, I've never worked with a, a temp agency before. Would it be the same person that, uh, would come in day in and day out while we're in this transition period?
That would be the goal, but with a temp agency, you never can be sure that someone is going to be able to stay the entire time.
Do you have anybody in mind that you might want to work with to help during this transition?
Len, I don't think we can go that route. You need to get closer to the mic.
Oh. And, I forgot, mine's here. I was asking Jolene whether she had anybody in mind other than going to a temp agency. I don't know, just a question I'm throwing out there. One, I'll let her answer first.
Um, well, I, I don't have anyone particular in mind because it would have been inappropriate for me to ask anyone without knowing if I was going to be appointed as the interim city administrator, so, all right.
Len, one of the thoughts that, um, with going with a temporary service, because this is a temporary position for now, is that there's not going to be, um, a full hiring process, a full vetting process, because they're, it's already done through the temporary service for one. For two, we're not going to have the additional employee costs, um, involved because it's through a temporary service. So we won't be paying the medical, the PERS, and all of that stuff right off the bat until if they, until they would, should be, could become a permanent employee. But until we get everything squared away, this, I believe, is probably a little cheaper way to accomplish the same thing until we figure out exactly where we're going and what we're going to do.
With Kelly, I believe, I've worked around that typical process and you can, I believe, and don't quote me on this, but I believe you can request one person...
Yes, you can.
And get these, if you let them know the job description, what the person needs to be, they will try to find a person, and they religiously try to find a person that'll meet those qualifications because they want you to use them in the future. And they've been pretty good, as far as I know about that, so...
Yeah, and that, an administrative assistant would be someone who you might have different from time to time. I mean, somebody to answer the phones and that sort of thing. This is, in my opinion, this is a little bit higher level.
Right.
This is somebody that can take on more duties and, uh, and I would expect that it would be, there'd be some consistency to it, that we would not be bouncing people out, you know, that it wouldn't be a continual churn typically. Um, and that said, uh, I also have a question for Ms. Morishita. Have you thought about this at all? Do you have any thoughts, any opinions on this, anything we should be looking at here? What do you think of this idea?
I think that this is a fluid situation. Um, we are probably going to have to try it out to see what works and maybe it will be necessary to make adjustments, but for now, it seems like a reasonable start.
Good, okay. Thank you.
I have a question for the city attorney.
Mm-hmm.
I believe our, uh, code, uh, says that the city council gives direction to the city administrator. The city administrator is on vacation this week. I think we'd like to get this started, if it's approved, I think we'd like to get this started sooner than later.
Mm-hmm.
As the administrator is on vacation this week, can this council direct the assistant city administrator, who is acting as the administrator this week, to get started on this process right away if we approve this?
I see no issue with that.
Okay.
Okay. So, there you have it. Anybody want to make a motion? I will entertain one.
I move that we, um, hire a, through, uh, Kelly Services, a temporary, uh, staffing position. I'm not sure if I'm saying that right.
Second that.
Okay.
Uh, how should I...
Well, this is, my only concern about, pinned it down to Kelly Services, is maybe there's another temp agency, maybe Kelly doesn't have the one that's fit.
Sorry, let's, sorry. Let me withdraw that motion and I'll just go with what's kind of at the bottom here. Uh, I move that we authorize the hire of a temporary person through a contract agency.
I second that.
Okay. Tom got it. Okay, so, I had the motion by Counselor Reiser to authorize the hire from temporary, uh, contracting agency, and it was seconded by Counselor Mercerow. Any further discussion?
And this is effective immediately and we want it to happen as soon as possibly can, right?
That's correct.
This isn't a July 1st?
No. The July 1st was her, this is as soon as possible.
Right, okay.
Okay. No other further discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, motion passes, or whatever it is, please, you're authorized to hire someone. All right. So that ends this portion of the regular agenda, and we are now moving into the work session, which is item number four, which is the development agreement request from HT Properties slash Transu property at 181, 21 Webster Road. Um, so you guys are going to come up and give us a short presentation on what was worked on since the last one, correct? All right. And we'll need your name and that kind of stuff.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. My name is Hans Taggerson with HT Investment Properties, and, uh, I really want to say I appreciate the chance to be here tonight and to, uh, talk with you about a project that we feel is excellent project and will be a great benefit, um, to the community. Um, we've taken, and from our last meeting, we've tried to really simplify our request and so, um, my, my request tonight is that at the end of the work session, that, uh, you allow the city staff to agree to work with us on considering a development agreement that we will bring back, uh, to a future, um, city council meeting and, uh, for your consideration of adopting. So that's, that's number one request, is that we're able to continue, um, working on this development agreement that we can bring back to a future, um, city council meeting. Then, um, tonight, what I'd like to do is talk about two things that, uh, we're wanting to request be considered in this development agreement. And, uh, the, the first one is, uh, the water line. Um, we had, um, based on, uh, um, some direction we're given, proposed to, uh, move the water line onto the city property. To simplify things and streamline it, we've taken and designed our site to keep the water line on our property and give a public easement through the property. And we will take and replace the existing water line with a, uh, new water line. And so, our proposal now is just to keep the water line on our property and, uh, we'll replace it new, with a new, uh, um, water line pipe. So, that's, uh, option, our one item. The second item is the sanitary improvements that, uh, we're proposing, and we've, uh, presented to the city's staff and they have agreed, makes sense. We're requesting that, uh, your approval on those, uh, sanitary sewer improvements and that, uh, um, we can, uh, put them in the development agreement. And we also are proposing that if these improvements that, uh, we're proposing aren't correct and these improvements only need to be, um, changed and corrected, that, uh, HT Properties will make those corrections. And, uh, we're confident that based on the significant sewer scope and study and the existing deficiencies out there that are currently in place, that we're proposing, um, solving, that, uh, we have, uh, identified the problems that directly relate to, um, the sewer line in this area. So those are our two, um, suggestions and, uh, requests, um, that be addressed in the development agreement. And just to kind of wrap things up, I have Mike Robinson in, um, here to answer any questions that you might have. Um, I also brought a, kind of a site map that propose, shows basically the sewer line is, we're proposing just stay in the existing area and cross our property, um, from one end to the other, so...
Yeah, and so where's the, on that, does it show where the water line, where your, where your water line's going to go?
Yeah, the wa, the water line, I can basically kind of follow it. It, it comes down, the property's kind of a flag lot, so it comes down the flag lot and then it turns and comes, stays in the parking lot. And it stays in the parking lot to be nearly the end of the property, and then it goes out through a landscape strip, so, goes from...
Where does it wind up, huh? Does it go, or, or do that ends in that Stone Oaks Court?
The Stone Oaks Court, yeah.
Okay.
Yep.
And I think someone, I don't know who mentioned this, that connection between the new pipe and the old pipe is basically, um, how should I say? Anyway, it's fraught with problems. There will be leaks.
It, um, it's a coupling that, um, you know, it's, it's a, it's a coupling that, uh, there can be issues with, yes. Um, so, um, you know, it's, I think the city probably can speak to that and there's, this is, you know, I'm pretty certain, you know, that, uh, that this is not the only, um, coupling like that in the city. But, uh, that, uh, that's something that, you know, your public works department can speak to as far as what kind of problems they've had, but it, it can be an issue.
So this looks like what's there now. I mean, is, is the, the right of way, has it changed at all, or, you know, they're still in the same area, or...
Uh, the, this, the, it, it follows pretty closely to the existing water line. The, the existing water line, it doesn't, it's not exactly where it is, but it's very close. I mean, the water line, it's, uh, within feet, um, of where the existing water line is.
Are you going deeper now? It was like only a foot before, so...
Yeah, yeah, so we'll, we'll be going deeper and, uh, so, yes.
Are you asking for money from the people of Gladstone?
Um, we're, we're putting, we're planning on just putting the, replacing the water line with, uh, an eight-inch ductile line. And so we're not asking for that eight-inch line to be, um, STC credited.
So you're, you're not asking for any money from the people of Gladstone tonight?
Not for, not for that water line. Um, you know, if the city wants to come back and request anything special, um, but the eight-inch, just replacing an eight-inch with an eight-inch, we're not.
But what about the sewer line?
The sewer line?
Yeah.
Um, those, those proposals, as far as STCs, um, you know, that's, um, we can, those, we'll take and replace the, those three proposals that we had for the sewer line, the two-man holes and that water line, we'll take and bear the cost of those.
So there is no cost to the city in either place in this plan?
No.
Okay, thank you.
Is Scott still back there?
Yeah.
Yes. So Scott, can you address this coupling connection and what that means impact-wise for us down the road? Will that, then we will have to complete the path?
Yeah, if I could, please. Can I, uh, placing the new line through the new property is not an issue. They have many different styles of couplings, how you could connect to, from AC pipe to ductile iron pipe. Um, some are called just flex couplings, we use those quite often, which would, we would probably use because it gives you a wider range for OD differentials in there. Your AC pipe has a larger OD or outside diameter more than your ductile iron pipe. They make these fittings to fit exactly how they're supposed to. So it's really not, um, we use them quite a bit when we, uh, take a piece of AC pipe out of the, or, out of service and put in a, a piece of ductile iron. We have those readily, and that's what we use to fix our mains with. So it's not really a big issue. Uh, they're, they're specifically designed for different materials and different ODs to fit correctly, so... And the, the other way they call them flex, it gives you a little bit of flexibility with those larger rubbers and, and everything that, how they connect, so it's, it's very kind of flexible, which is kind of a good thing because when earth moves and this and that, you got that flexibility on them, so... It's, to me, it's not a, uh, any kind of an issue. Installed properly, they, they'll last forever, so, until the other, one of the other pipe fails. They're, they're usually ceramic coated, or not ceramic coated, but, you know, epoxy coated and, uh, all the rust potentials are taken out of them.
So could you speak about the difference of going from 12-inch, which is what the proposal was two months ago, to eight-inch?
They have those, you can, you can make those flex couplings from, go from those, oh, from...
From the 12-inch pipe is what initially was to the eight-inch and, and because of the sale point last time was...
My initial thought, when they were talking of going on the city Oberson property through a right-of-way, the 12-inch would grant the city higher capabilities for fire protection in the intermediate zone on Oakfield Road and also be able to increase the capabilities for domestic use. And because we would be taking it off of our 27-inch transmission line where the pressure is already an existing 62 PSI on a static with just one pump running at our, our treatment plant, and it goes up, we could easily modify the pressure range to accommodate that area to make sure that they have adequate pressure and also not... to make sure that they have adequate pressure and also not to exceed that adequate pressure where you're going to be start blowing hot water tanks and causing main failures down the road. That's the big difference between the 12-inch and just replacing the 8-inch through the property now as proposed would be you're not gaining anything other than moving that line out of harm's way and putting in a better material for just the purpose of, so they can build over where that existing line is. You're not gaining, your coefficients as far as friction loss in those pipes are pretty much equal. So you're not losing or gaining anything. You're going to have the same as, same as. So other than you just have an area of a newer ductile iron pipe, which is far, you know, sturdier and more reliable. And of course, with any AC pipe, we're seeing those lines are at their end-of-age limits anyway. So, is that answered?
Somewhat, I guess. So Stone Oaks, that was also part of the problem, or part of the solution was then we no longer had the AC running between houses, so that's just going, we're going to give up-
There's just going to be, it will still be, remain there.
Okay.
It will still-
And that's, you don't see that as a huge problem?
Only until it breaks. And I have to access that area and I don't, you know, then you're going to have to isolate the area, you're going to have to remove private property fencing, whatever decorative materials they have there to get to access to that main. You don't know what kind of damage will have occurred during that process until that main is shut down. So I mean, to me, it's a high risk, just like it is up on Devonshire and up through that area where you have them running between properties and behind properties. So it's a, it's a time bomb. So it could be 10 minutes, it could be 10 years. I don't know.
So I guess that would be something that I, if we decide to make an agreement with H.T. here, would be maybe still look at-
Replacement.
Or getting away from between the houses, which would then mean, I realize it would mean, instead of going straight out there, you would come down the 30 or 40 feet to the library property and then just go out to Oakfield from there. That would, my only, I would ask just to at least look at that and-
I have no issues with that. I think that's a viable option. We haven't discussed that.
Okay.
It's a very viable option.
It may be way too expensive for two houses, but it might be something to spend an hour and look at.
I like the big dog theory where you can replace a 12-inch and then have future capabilities off of that while removing a large portion of that intermediate zone off of our Kirkwood Reservoir up on the hill, which supplies the pressure for that intermediate zone and freeing it up for more, just having it for fire capabilities in other areas.
So, before you leave, so, and I don't, I have it in my mind roughly that this water line would connect at Stone Oaks Court somewhere. It would go through someone's backyard to get to the connection.
It's already there. We would just connect it outside of wherever that connection would be most feasible. And then at that point, prior to that connection, we would put a valve in to make sure that then we would only isolate a lesser portion than what we have right now. Right now, we have a large area that we have to shut down just to access the existing main as is. That being said, when they run the new line, we'll be able to lessen that distance and be able to isolate a lot easier and have fewer people out of service if there is something that we had to fail with. So it's doable on that, but we still have it running between the properties.
If we enter into, if we ask staff to continue working on this development agreement, if H.T. Properties was interested in allowing that easement on what I'm going to call the West Property Line, where it ties into Stone Oaks, is it possible to put a T in there and allow the easement to run all the way to the Webster Road property where at a future date, we could cap one side of that T if we had easement to that property from this end? And then run the, run a new line down?
I see where you're going with that, leaving that possibility open for future easements. I think that would be something-
Can I make this assumption, Mayor? Maybe if you can get back, get back with the map, with the council's thing, I think we understand what you're saying.
This is city property, this is city properties.
And where's the water line?
Oh, the water line?
Right here.
Yep, right here.
Okay. So you want-
I picked this up at the county today. And I can talk about this, but there's the connection point right there. It affects one, two, three, four properties. It runs mostly along Stone Oaks Court. Along the front, over the front edge.
That way we wouldn't even have to know.
That's the only one to get to worry about, right? I mean, that's, one, two. I picked it up at the county today. You don't, you don't have this.
Right, but we're still, we're going to have one.
I should have, I should have made copies, I'm sorry.
I went down yesterday.
Yeah. I looked. Sure, you can see the four, you can see the four properties right there. Okay, I missed one. Do you want me to speak to this?
Well, no.
Mayor Jacobella, as members of council, Mike Robinson, good to see you again. Thank you for your time tonight. Let me just say what I wanted to say very quickly. Hans modified his request to this council to try and make it simpler. And as Councilor Johnson asked, and as Hans answered, there won't be any cost to the city at all. He'll bear the cost of installing the new ductile iron pipe. Sounds like Councilor Sigmund, your suggestion is a good one. It looks like we can accommodate that. The sanitary and sewer improvements would also be the same way, no cost to the city. And Mayor, we, you had a suggestion to your city administrator about essentially a whole harmless provision in the development agreement. That is, we do the sanitary sewer improvements that we've discussed with your city engineering staff. If it turns out there's something different for those improvements in your sanitary sewer master plan, we'll come back and comply with the master plan. So what we're looking for is certainty as to public improvements. You'll have certainty, there's no cost to the public. And as your city attorney has said, this doesn't impinge on the planning commission's authority to approve or deny the design review application. So that's what we'd like to work on with your staff. And in fact, we could bring back, if you wanted to see a couple of different versions of development agreement, we can draft those for review by your interim city administrator and David and bring you back a couple of different versions. But we'd like you to direct staff to work with us on a development agreement. We'd like to bring the language back to you for consideration by this body in a public hearing. That's all I wanted to say. You know, I think you asked a lot of good questions in March. I hope we answered them. We tried to be honest and forthright with our answers. And I think Hans' discussion tonight gives you the assurance that A, the citizens of Gladstone aren't asked to pay in any form, either cash or credits, any part of the improvements. And B, because it appeared you were uncomfortable to some extent with putting an easement on the city-owned property, we just took that off the table. So I hope that answers your questions. Andrew Toll with 3J Consulting's here as well. If you have more questions, please ask us.
Okay.
That's all.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thanks for your time tonight.
Anything else? Pretty good, pretty good, pretty good. Everybody up here good? All right.
I just, I wanted to ask, Jolene, do you see any issue with?
I haven't had time to review it, so I'm unable to answer your question.
My question is not regarding the mechanics, about working with them to in fact make this process keep going. Will a new assistant be of help? Will you have the manpower to do what they ask for?
I'm not sure what they're going to ask for, but if the council wants this to be done, then we'll schedule the time to try to do it and we will readjust priorities.
Okay. Anything else?
I like their new proposal.
I think I'm good with it. Okay, so we don't need, really need a vote per se. We just need a consensus, so let's just go down the table.
We're in a work session too, so.
Yeah, oh, okay. All right, you're right.
It's okay. You know, I think sometimes too much is made of the distinction between work session and- At this point, I think some direction from council. If you want H.T. Properties and Mr. Robinson to begin drafting an agreement for your review, it'd be good to know. And if you don't, that would be good to know as well.
Yes, sir. May I, 30, 20 seconds? What we prefer to do to save your staff time is, we have time, is we draft the agreement. We understand we have to pay for any staff time of both your interim city administrator and your city attorney. But we could draft the agreement, send it to both of them for review. When they feel like they've got something that's worth bringing back to council, then we'd like you to direct them to set it for a public hearing. That's, that's one of a number of ways you could proceed. Thank you.
I want to make it clear that I am not the interim city administrator until July the first. So unless this happens then after that-
Stay corrected. We'll send it to the assistant city administrator.
Let the record reveal. Okay. One quick question for Scott. Is the 8-inch pipe versus the 12-inch pipe, I mean, bigger's always better, but is it an issue?
Them to upsize the piping through their project to a 12-inch is what you're asking? You're still only feeding it from an 8-inch, so you're really not gaining anything. I mean, you still have, you're feeding from an 8-inch to a 12-inch and then back to an 8-inch. So you really haven't accomplished-
I'm misunderstanding.
Okay, or maybe I misunderstood the question.
Is it 8-inch?
It's 8-inch through the entire project.
Right.
And you were talking about them upsizing that through the project as a 12?
No, no, my quest, I didn't make it very clear, I'm sorry. My question is, the 8-inch that is through their property, is there any major downsides considered versus 12-inch, considering what, there really not much room for development up there other than those two properties?
Yeah. The 8-inch going through the property, if we had to access it, I've looked over the plans, we've reviewed them, and I'm sure that we'll do it again to make sure that number one, we have accessibility for that for repairs if something should come up. So we have that, whether it's an 8 or a 12.
Right, but size-wise, do you see, is there any major issue from your side of it having only an 8-inch and not the 12-inch?
Just that the intermediate zone supplied via that existing main or even the new one is only an 8-inch pipe. We've shown deficiencies in our water's master plan of firefighting capabilities in that area. It's, I believe it's referred to to increase that at some point. So we would be better off, in my opinion, with a 12 from another source, but that's kind of off the table. And it's something we would have to look at doing ourselves at some point in time. Because the capabilities are there, it's just the mechanism of installing it.
Maybe I'm misunderstanding something then. Don't we have a larger main running down both Webster and Oakfield and it just ties between the two of them?
No, we have a large main, that is, our, our main I'm talking, referring to is our 27 transmission line, 27-inch. That goes up to our Webster reservoirs. That 8-inch line that runs, that they're talking about going through the transseap property is the main feeder line for just the Webster, Oakfield Road area, and that is the sole feeder line except for our inner tie with Oak Lodge up at Caldwell Road.
Okay, that was the inner tie I was confused with.
Yeah, we, we don't have anything higher than a 8-inch supplying that area.
Okay. Thank you.
So I guess the follow-up question, or just kind of bouncing around this, doesn't it make more sense to have 12-inch from Webster Road and so 4-inch is not going to be that much bigger of a hole all the way around, I don't believe in my math, and then at least have 12-inch all the way to the back end of that property from Webster Road versus the 8-inch so that if we ever then decide to go on-
It's the existing location of the 8-inch through the transseap property. To access our 27-inch, we have to come down-
Oh, you do, okay.
-from their property to an area that we have a blind flange on our 27 for the sole purpose of a valve to be installed to supply water to a 5 million gallon reservoir. And the piping would go from there on. So we're, it's, if it was close, yeah, run with it, but we just can't.
So you can't hook in to that main right there?
To tap that size of main, especially the concrete cylinder pipe, to tap it, you would have to do of course a large wet tap and also weld on an access hatch. Once you've tapped it, you have to de-water the main, you have to go back inside, you have to re-grout the lining on the steel pipe and then back out. It's very complex and very expensive. It just doesn't make sense, it won't pan out.
Okay. Okay. I think I'm satisfied? Good, no more other questions? So we reached a consensus to have city administrator or the assistant city administrator or whomever-
Move forward.
-to work with H.T. Properties and work towards the developmental agreement request. You good, Lynn?
I don't hear any heartburn anywhere, so.
Okay, so I think-
Sounds like me.
Sounds like it's a good consensus. Jolene, would you make note of that?
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you very much for your time tonight.
Yeah, thank you guys. Thanks for coming back. Oh, were we going to, yeah, that's it.
That's it.
Okay, uh, let's see, going to a little, so do we have to go back to regular agenda to do business from the council and come out of a work session? Would it make you feel better? Okay, we're coming out of a work session, back to regular agenda, and we announce business from the council. Tomorrow night, Senior Center, the dinner, or is it?
Thursday night.
Thursday night.
Thursday night.
The marijuana dinner.
The Thursday night?
Thursday night.
I got the wrong date, yeah. Thursday night, Senior Center. We've got the League of-
No, it's, it's the Clackamas Cities Association Dinner.
Yeah, and Gladstone's hosting. Okay. So we'll all be there, won't we?
Yes, we will. I might be a little late. I've got a class that night. I've got a couple of kids that need to take a final, so.
Okay, we went from Mr. Nelson, business from the council, we're going to Mr. Reisner, business from the council.
A suggestion that I was, I'd like to make in regards to the Lake Oswego Tiger Water Project, been venturing through their construction up here on the hill, you know, and also down at the park. And I'd like to make a suggestion that before the city signs off on that, it's been returned back to pristine condition that it was in before it started, that we take a tour of it and that we feel that it is back to pristine condition, bigger, better, or whatever, would be my, my suggestion. And then the only other thing I have, Glenn just mentioned. Further discussion, of course, in regards to maybe a future tour that I would bring it up and plant the seed.
Okay.
Mr. Mercer.
Nothing for me.
Okay, Mr. McMahon?
Nothing.
Mr. Johnson? I've got four things on my list this evening. Tomorrow evening is, I think many of you know, we sent an email, the city administrator sent an email out to everyone, that the Regional Wastewater Advisory Committee meeting is at the county tomorrow night. As I've discussed with some of you, this is a big deal. They're going to be asking for money, a lot of money. Looks like the minimum they're going to be asking for is about $41 million. And I am seriously concerned that that ask is not going to be as much beneficial for those of us in the Tri-City Service District as it will be for those in the CCSD number one district. I would encourage all of you to attend. I think that your attendance and the audience will show concern on this issue. Last time, they did take, they did take a rule from the audience, introductions from the audience, so your presence will be noted. I also asked our friends via email in Oregon City and Wes Lynn to attend. They're both, both council and commission are one member short and they're five members to begin with, so it sounds like in both cases, unfortunately, they have other meetings and probably will not make it. Brian Shaw from Oregon City might make it if he can get it, get a change, so. But we are trying to reach out and get more people to come, so I hope that you'll make some time. If you have any questions, just let me know. Second thing on my list is that last week, I had a meeting with our friend LB Day in which I asked if he might be able to help us get started with the process for hiring a new city administrator, what ideas he might have on whether he could be a resource for that. He said he could. He also said that he would like to do it like he has on other things generously and no charge to the city. I asked him for a proposal, he said no, he wanted to do it on a no charge basis. He asked that, that he- He asked that, that we start with a subcommittee of the city council if possible, he'd like to meet with three people sometime in the near future if the council is interested in having that done. One of the, one of the people he wants to make sure is there is he asked specifically that Mayor Jacobellus be one of those three people, 'cause you've got lots of time on your hands. So I would be interested to know what the council's thoughts are on that, if that sounds like a reasonable course to get started. My initial concern is that I, I want this to move as quickly as possible, this is probably one of the more important things that this council will do, like to get it done right, like to get it going fast. Do any of you have any thoughts on that? Should I ask LB to, to schedule a meeting and if so, who would you like to attend that meeting?
I think we should move forward with it.
Nice.
I've already voiced my opinion.
Okay.
To the mayor.
All right. Should I go back to Mr. Day and set something up and who would you like to join you? 'Cause you've been volunteering.
Nothing like to put me right on that seat. Well, listen, why don't we just decide who, who else wants to be there, I mean-
I'd be glad to volunteer if I can work into my school schedule, we've only got a couple of weeks left of school, so I don't know how soon you're wanting to meet or what type of day.
I'm gonna shoot for like Monday or even later this week. Fast as we possibly can.
Later this week, he'll be gone next week.
Later, LB's boss says later this week, so.
And if it's during the day, I wouldn't be available.
So.
Sorry.
I, I would be interested in joining you.
Anyone else?
I'd be interested, but I can't do it this week. Potentially I'm working tomorrow and Thursday and I'm out of town Friday and Saturday, so.
All right, well.
Guess it's me and you, Steve.
All right, okay, well, we'll get it started, we'll see what happens.
They got to bring it up after the school's out.
Friday? I can't do it Friday, I have to go meet the governor.
Oh, boy, okay. Thursday.
I heard she's gonna be in town.
Can I have one comment on that? I just wanna clarify for the record, so right now, we're not talking about any charge to the city?
He, he is donating his time.
Okay, just throw that out because if, if, if payment for any reason does become an issue, you've got a process you might have to go through, I just don't want there to be any confusion. But since right now, we're not talking about any cost to the city, I don't see any problem.
He was, he was, yeah. Yeah, very generous, yeah. I'm still, still got a couple more.
We're all going at this point.
Me, Steve and you.
Thank you for volunteering, awesome, Tom.
We've got two more, two more things here, sorry, I, I know usually I have this long of a list, but I, I get through these two fairly quickly. The City Hall Police Department Committee has been doing really good work for our city, they've met many times, they've been very, very industrious in the work that they've done and asking questions about is a combination, some combination library, City Hall Police Department possible, what works, what doesn't, why doesn't it, they've visited many different municipalities and seen many different facilities. They are nearing the point of, of presenting their report to the city council. I floated an idea because we have too much time on our hands in general, you need to have more meetings, of having a joint meeting with this committee, I think there will be lots and lots of questions, they've got lots to share and I'm sure that there will be lots of input and lots of questions from the city council. I would suggest a budget committee style meeting in this room around tables where frank discussions can happen. Their next, their meeting, they meet every other week, their next meeting is on June first, Monday, June first, their next regular meeting would be Monday, June fifteenth. I'm proposing that as a possible date for that, that type of a joint meeting, like to know what the council thinks is a joint meeting, something that they would like to do and is that date doable. Remind the council that June ninth, we're having a joint meeting, I think with Parks, are we not? And then June twenty, the second, the third, third, we have a joint meeting with Planning These folks have done good work, I think we should take the time to hear what they have to say and I know there's gonna be a lot of questions, so can, can that work or should we try something else or what do you all think?
I'm good with having joint meeting June first.
Fifteenth.
Or June, oh, fifteenth.
Fifteenth. Their, their last regular meeting is the first, they're going to be finishing up their, their report on the first and discussing it and then the fifteenth would be when they would deliver that to the council.
Okay, I'm good with fifteenth.
Yep, that sounds really great.
Would that be a six-thirty thing? Just like everything else?
Yeah, they meet at six-thirty, we meet at six-thirty, I think that's probably fine.
Is that gonna require public notice?
Well, we've got time.
And?
It's a public meeting, so. Public meeting, yeah. Okay, um, if there's no more on that, the last thing I have, we're okay? Have one more item or?
Go ahead.
Okay, all right, one more item. I noticed that, again, this is along the lines of the Meldrum Bar Park, that all work appears to have stopped on Jensen Road, which is the, the walkway into the park. I would like to see that reopened at summertime, I understand that Lake Oswego has some technical difficulties, by the nature of those technical difficulties, at least in the report that I saw, it could be months or longer before they get them resolved and are ready to start work again. I don't think it's fair to the people of Gladstone that a major thoroughfare like that remains closed, so I would like to see that reopen and Mr. Taber has an opinion, I can see it.
No, thank you, I'm, I'm just, I always stay a close touch with the contractor, Calucio. They are planning on finishing the pipe run up Jensen as quickly as possible so that they can do just as you're asking. That will be happening within the next two weeks, I believe is what I was told, so.
Okay.
Just FYI.
Yeah, okay, it looks really sleepy there and I, and I remember hearing about, you know, the problems of the machine is stuck, pipes are all-
Well, until they open cut, they wanna finish that portion of Jensen Road so they can restore it back and get off of it, so that's the whole plan on that, so.
So soon, soon they are even.
Within a couple of weeks, they'll be starting on that.
Even though it looks kinda sleepy right now, soon that's-
It's very sleepy, yeah, but they're, 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 they're working.
Very good, thank you, Mayor, that's all I have.
Okay, uh, who did I leave?
About where you are, don't you?
Yeah, she's skipping around, messing up, okay, go ahead, there, Mr. Sickman.
Nothing.
Oh, my.
Don't ask, don't, don't.
All right. Um, and that's it, right, everybody spoke?
Okay.
The only thing I have is because of the timeline, I, like Tammy Stempel had presented last week or last session to us that there was three grants in the works, we got notified after the last city council meeting by Metro to proceed with our letter of interest on the one that I had written a letter of interest on.
Cool.
Because of that and when they did actually notify us and when we did actually get up to Clackamas County to talk some up there to help us through the process, it couldn't make it on the schedule, so all I'm asking, part of that, the actual grant application requires for, they like to see a letter of approval by the city council of the city saying this is a good idea to get this grant. So because of that, because it couldn't be on agenda, I'm asking the council, y'all, to authorize me to draft this letter saying the grant application to Metro for the planning grant for the downtown revitalization plan is a good idea and we'd like to follow through with it.
So moved.
Glenn, you good, Tom, you okay with me writing the letter?
Yeah.
Kim, everybody's good? I'll write the letter and put it in the packet. When I get the final application, I'll just burn a copy and put it in everybody's box in case you wanna see it and that's, that's that. I think that is a wrap, so with that, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you.